We're back on Freeport City Council. I'm out of executive session.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, it is now ten fifteen P M. We are out of the executive session. There is no action to take from the executive session. And I will entertain a motion to adjourn the regular agenda at City Council meeting.
Make your motion to adjourn.
We have a motion, Councilor Kane, is there a second? We have a second, Councilor Kane here. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Unanimous, we are out of session. I will now call the agenda with the special meeting of the Freeport City Council on Monday, March twentieth, twenty twenty-three, at eight P M. We're going to pass that. I'll call it to open the session. And I'll call it to order. Are there any citizen comments?
Yes.
Do you need forms to fill out?
Aye. On the agenda, my understanding, class looks like that. Melanie Oldham.
I was going to wait until you get to item two.
Okay. All right. All right. Anybody else? Manny Roden sign.
I'm waiting five minutes too.
All right, very good. All right, with that, ladies and gentlemen, I will then go into regular session of council business. On item number one, discuss the state possible action on all brass sex reports by Zachary Navarro regarding the stolen possession counts of deluded accounts of police and public. Councilor Kane here.
Yes, Mayor. In consideration of the discussions that were had here, that there will be transparency here soon enough, as related to these reports, I'm happy to withdraw that particular agenda.
So you're asking the number one be withdrawn, is that correct?
Yes.
So that table over drawn.
Withdrawn.
All right, it is withdrawn. Item number two, discuss the state possible action on legislation being proposed regarding the East End by the Freeport. Melanie Oldham. Send Manny here next, please. Special meeting requires special time, so we actually give you ten seconds.
Melanie Oldham, twenty-two West Fifth Street. I want to thank Port Commissioner Rocky Sapi for being here. On this item, I used to go to the Port Commissioner meetings, I do occasionally, but I always go back and look at their minutes. And for those of you that don't know, the Port Commissioners on February twenty-third voted to start a procedure in Austin, either do a resolution or a bill, to basically make the City of Freeport deannex the whole East End to the Port. They're actually, they're eating the city, you all, to use, to do a resolution or a bill. And there's three other bills the Port is pushing up in Austin, which y'all need to look at, because two of them will hurt the city. But anyway, I'm glad this is finally, I just read through the minutes, it's like, oh my gosh, you know. I assume Mr. Kelty others have known about this, but this is the point where you all have to decide, you know, are you going to stand up to the Port? And don't let them come in and say, you know, you do this or this, or we're going to have a resolution or a bill to make you deannex that East End to us. So anyway, I just became aware of it today, did a little research, and, you know, again, the Port is never open and transparent, so I hope you all in the city will be.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Olson.
Well, you guys have my passion for the East End. You know why I have a passion for the East End? Because the people of the East End is the one that brought Manny Roden back to his grandmother. He was in a foster home in Key West, Florida. It was those people on the East End that brought us back home, you know, to my grandmother. Daddy beat us because we had no skin on our body. He was in the hospital for six months. The people of the East End brought us home, and it started to live. So I fight for Freeport, just like it's one of my own family. That's why I'm in the Port State, makes the statements, and that they're going to take something, and it's like, who's bow down and allow them to take it, you know? If we're Freeport strong, we need to be Freeport strong. And a strong man, he's standing to fight. Cowards will bow down. I don't believe there's no cowards in Freeport. There's strong people in Freeport. Only thing that I want the council to do, and my representative that I talked to, you know, and I told him he got more power than he think he has, he needs to force support to that, you know, what's going on. He is the representative of the water. But if he's scared, say he's scared. But if you're going to fight, stand up and fight, because there's no cowards there. Look at that, they're going to take Freeport. They're not going to take it where it's laying down. They'll take it where it's fighting, all right, man?
Hey, Randy. I'm Randy, the lot of Watson. Miss Wallace, your answer, Mr. Wiki.
Uh-huh.
You're in, Rod, don't you?
Yes, sir.
All right, anybody else? All right, Councilor Kane, Councilor Rod, comments? End or discussion?
I'll go first, Mayor. Yes, sir. First, I'd just like, also thank everybody here in the city for staying for the special meeting, and also, special thanks to Mr. Kelsey to be here tonight as well, from the Port, as the Port's representative, if there should be any questions, and people have been able to answer on behalf of the Port, from the City Council. But I want to make sure that everybody understands one thing that was brought up earlier. And I'm sorry if I'm leaning into microphone here. All of these matters that are on this special meeting are highly time-sensitive. I'm sensitive to that idea, that notion that these particular items are that important, because we're talking about the East End, and how fast the Port is acting by their legislation that they, they're trying to move on as we go through their minutes on the twenty-third. It's very time-sensitive. And more details to that matter will be coming forward. And the same thing for all the other agenda items, I can give you exactly the reasons why they're all time-sensitive. But make no mistake, the reason why these are out here tonight, and the reason I was trying to get them on the agenda, is because they are all time-sensitive in nature. And so, that all said, I put this particular item on the agenda to make sure that it wasn't lost in the shuffle, that it wasn't lost in the discussion of how did that happen? I want everybody to be completely aware, simply because it is in the interest of Freeport, of how we deliberate and how we negotiate with the Port for the East End. The East End is in my ward, so you're absolutely right to guess that I would bring this up. And I wanted to make sure I brought it up so that we have a public discourse about it. Just like what we did when we had Kissima, I was pushing to make sure that we had a public discourse about it. Any major decisions need and require a public discourse. I'm not interested in having things scuttled away in executive session. I'm not interested in things never making any time here in the regular sessions or special meetings. And so, this is one of the items that I actually tried to get on the agenda at the last meeting. Now, I was accused of trying to abuse the agenda policy by the city manager, but I don't think this is abuse of the city policy, when I'm trying to get matters that are very time-sensitive and important to the citizens of Ward A and all of Freeport, and for that matter, any city that wants to look to this and say, hey, maybe we should look to see how Freeport's doing, so we don't make the same mistakes. Hopefully, you make Freeport make the right decisions and saves what they can for the East End. And that's all I have to say there.
Sir, Councilor Rod.
Oh, I'm good.
Sorry?
I'm good. Or his comments?
All right.
Mayor. Don't have any comments?
Yes, Mayor.
Melanie Oldham. I just wanted to say, when I first came to Freeport, and for a lot of you, I'll probably remember this, but the city had wisely, and had some land, valuable land by the Port, and Mr. Raytech and Ms. Sett-Hawke went to Dennis Bonin and said, I want you to go secretly and do this bill to make the City of Freeport deannex that land back to the Port. And so, the city lost that valuable land, built sixty-six, ended up building on it. And I remember, I used to be a public health advocate up in the Capitol, and I would go to sort of legislative sessions. I can remember Dennis Bonin, our state rep at the time, standing up there and saying, the City of Freeport is blighted, so why don't we let the Port expand, 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 and just take over all of Freeport? This is quite a few years back, and that's what their plan still is. They don't want to coexist with us, the city. They want to expand, expand, expand. And so, we don't want to repeat that terrible thing that happened years ago, and you all have the power, the ability to stand up to the Port. The city has eminent domain power, you have good waters, you know, I think we want you to stay in that.
Melanie, I will say that this is pretty critical, as you speak of, and that we will definitely do as much as we can as a, as a city to stand up for the citizens. Mr. Olson, is there any updates that we can share with the public that, you know, doesn't, doesn't hurt us, or?
Sure. I mean, it's not confidential information, the actual bill that is floating around there. It's my understanding that's what the Port has put together and presented to our state representative at this time, and the state representative has not signed off on it. But we are, like we talked about in the executive session, taking steps to try to work with the Port to resolve this matter.
Yes, we are going to try to work with it, Melanie. Like I said, it's pretty critical, and we're just going to do as best as we can for, for Freeport.
Yes, sir.
Well, I really sit here and really feel deeply that you guys really care, because I've seen this before, that they really showed their care. But in the business of the meeting, show that our mayor and our city was working with the Port people for decades to sell our property. So when you sit here to say that you want to fight for us in a motion, in a, in a matter that you showing emotion, I can't believe it, because I've seen what happened to us with a naked official that's sitting in our face and directing our face, and this kind of meeting lied to us, and then when getting in front of those folks at the Port Commission meeting, they stand right up there in your face, and they showed you exactly who turned, who did you out, who did you the way they did you. And that's what Councilman Mayor Brinson shared to the citizens on the East End. We found out at the last meeting.
Anything else, Councilor?
Mayor, I'd like to say, Mr. Roden, none of us were up here whenever this all began, and when homes were taken, when they were starting to move in the direction that they have moved. Those of us that are up here are laying with the hand that we were dealt. And we will continue to do what we can, what we feel like is right for the City of Freeport, to the end. That's all.
Mr. Kelty, have any comments on this?
Yes, sir.
And Mr. Olson, could you, as our city attorney, give us an idea of how legislation would work?
Well, the clock is ticking. We're, I think bills have to be in committee by end of month, so, I think we're, we are trying, I don't want to get too much into it, because there has been, you know, they're working towards an eminent domain case, so that we are working in the pending litigation type of phase of these types of negotiations. We're getting our ducks in a row. Hopefully, we'll have an opportunity to sit down with them and try to resolve this matter. But at the end of the day, we're going to do everything in our power to prohibit any type of legislation that would require disannexation of our tight hands and see in this ability to issue permits, Senator.
Yeah, I would say discretion is a better part of valor, and sometimes if there we can say nothing else, I will say this. For mere fact, with all due respect, Mr. Kelsey, and I appreciate you being here, for mere fact, that one publicly supported tax entity would work, with a representative that represents all of us, to take away our property, to deannex, to take away our rights to control the destiny. To take away our ability to make sure what's put there is safe and permitted. And I'll fight folks in a straight-up battle on eminent domain. But we have that added pressure. Mix it up. I agree with Manny. I think folks in Freeport dug, and I think we'll rise to the occasion. But we have to do it in a way that's legal, that's reasonable, and hopefully with some logic. Quite frankly, there's no way we're going to get the property back in, in East End. It's not going to happen. It's gone, it's sold, or traded. Right or wrong, those are prices. I have my personal opinion on that, I think they should have been more, but that's, that started many years ago. I also believe, and I might have to bite this too, I think that the City of Freeport should have done a better job on the roads, maintaining them. But that started a long time ago. So, I'm always willing to talk. I'm always, I think talking, we have to set the example for ourselves, as well as our children, that we talk and try to solve things, but, and there will be a time for that, but then, then there may be a time that you have to just throw down. But, David, I, you might tell me, you've been around before, and I have potentially, it's not necessary that, you know, no fight's fair, but you want to start off in the best position possible. The only thing I can assure you is I believe this council has the, the merit, the fortitude to make the decisions that you, as our voters, as our citizens, have put us in this position to make. Sometimes they're critical decisions, but sometimes they're decisions to have to make. But I believe that we will take the fight, and fight the fight when we have to. Now, at some fifty-point time, you have to resolve the fight. You can't fight with us your life. And so, we will also look at that. But, I like what Randy said, just don't like that U.S. T-shirt. With that, item number three, discuss the possible actions regarding issues of concern by the public about code enforcement permits and building department inspections, and possible new procedures, policies regarding the interaction of city staff in these departments with the public. Councilor Kane here.
Thank you, Mayor. Now, the memo on this here is, the citizens of Freeport have brought the council's attention, several concerns about code enforcement, building permits, and inspections related to building projects. And I want to bring this up because, you know, I get, I get all the calls that, I'm sure you guys get too, we get the group texts, but I get a lot of calls of people jumping up and down, business owners and residents. And the residents are coming forward and speaking up. Business owners are, are coming forward and trying to speak up. But there's a lot that are staying silent because they're afraid of the retaliation from City Hall. That is a fact. I'm not making that up. I've been told that time and time again. I've lost count, but I should start keeping a list. Probably some not going to list names, because they're concerned that there could be retaliation because. And that's the issue I want to bring up here, is if there is no coherent, objective, fair, across-the-board process or systems, there'd be any indication that our code department is pro-Freeport. It's hurting our residents. It's hurting our residents to put up a fence, it's hurting our residents to put up a cardboard, it's hurting our residents to put up insulation, it's hurting our residents in so many different measurable ways. And maybe I'll just provide a list to council, and that'll probably be public, so that I'm ready to have it. But I, I pour upon the public to step forward. I'm happy to be your voice tonight, and I'm happy to be your voice going forward again. But let me just say, as that voice, that basically, right now, there is a, a strong sentiment that, I'm sorry. That there is selective enforcement by the code enforcement department. I wish I had this picture of a, of a, of a convenience store. Are you guys familiar with Port Cafe is, and on the river is there?
Yes, sir.
And do you know that there's a convenience store, strip center right between there?
Sorry. Yes, sir. And it has a new, pretty, uh, mural.
That's right. They also have a sign there that, basically, over the last fifty years, has indicated who those tenants are and would be. And but when I get a call that says, hey, that sign is in question as to whether or not it's the city's property, or the business owner's property, or the landlord's property, that just seems frivolous. It seems selective, and I ask why? Why are we trying to hinder a building, a bill, excuse me, a business from opening up? And that's one example. We also have another example where there's outriggers, and outriggers has a sign issue. I'm interested in getting these restaurants and these businesses and these convenience stores open as soon as possible that want to come here. Not hinder their ability to advertise, hinder their ability to even attract customers. And we need everything we can. I'm not interested in giving away our tax dollars. I'm interested in trying to generate more tax dollars, and we have to use prudent, fair, pro-business, common sense approach, policies, and application of these rules so that we can, in fact, allow these businesses to thrive, or for that matter, even exist, because right now, some of them are not able to be open. I, I'm familiar with, there's a new, well, there's a couple of thrift stores trying to open up, Mayor. Council. And they're not able to open up, can't get a permit for inspections to be completed. And, you know, here's the thing, is that I, I will speak to different constituents throughout Freeport, and they hear what we're talking about. They, they hear the mischaracterizations, but when it actually affects them personally, then they stand up, then they speak up. So when you had earlier today, Mr. Julian speaking up, he doesn't go around chasing contractors around the city, he's talking to the contractor that's in his front yard, literally in his front yard, because they're doing his driveway. And so, these, these folks have no vendettas against anybody. They're asking serious questions about how the city is conducting business. Is it fair? Or is it political? Or is it who you know? Well, I can tell you, if, if you ever hear a story about a city, it's basically a matter of who you know, not what you know, that's a terrible, terrible reputation for a city to have. And I, I've heard stories after stories about how that's, things used to be, and it's just disgusting that that's the case now. And but when I keep getting examples after examples after examples, that that is in fact going on now, I think the term I used was a mob boss city. That's what we have, and that has to end. And if that means we have to have a change of the guard of people who are in City Hall, who are managing City Hall, whether that's Tim Kelty, or Casey Roman, or Lance Petty, or Kathy Zell, or any other directors who are hindering our ability to grow, hindering our ability to, to actually act as a functioning city where our, our safety and our interest of, of helping businesses to have common sense approaches and solutions to open up, and to start opening to attract customers, and actually make a profit so that they can continue to feed their families, that's where we need to be aiming toward. I can tell you right now, the signage issues that Mrs. Clark brought up earlier, or Ms. Clark, excuse me, that brought up earlier, and other signage issues that were brought up previously, and other code enforcement issues, I had a chance here this afternoon to be on the receiving end of those very same political signage complaints. And so, we're only here chasing needlessly political vendettas against potential candidates, in my opinion. When there's other things we need to be doing. When somebody cannot continue to rehab with their house because code enforcement has not either scheduled, or has not enough time, or not enough resources, but yet they're flagging and removing political signs throughout the city, I can tell you here this afternoon, I was on the receiving end of this. So I get a text message from the city manager, and from code enforcement, to say that my sign, my political sign to reelect Jeff Mania for Ward A, which I had permission from the owner to put in front of their home, I got flagged, that they, and this particular property is for sale, actually, and it's actually in a different ward. But the point I want to make is that it was, I was told it was in the right of way. And what's interesting is that the property had a real estate sign right next to mine. And so, that real estate sign, and my sign were, I was told, were given forty-eight hours to be removed. So I drove over to this afternoon, and then I found that my sign was moved, placed on the fence, and that the real estate sign, which, by the way, if you're a real estate agent in the City of Freeport, we need you, we want you. We don't want to manipulate your signs. You should, you should be able to sell as many properties here in Freeport and keep that commerce activity going, because we need Freeport to grow. But that was, they were removed, they were touched, there wasn't no forty hour, forty-eight hours. But here's the kicker, just two blocks down, there was another real estate sign in the right of way, and it wasn't touched. So, I'm, I can believe, well, there's selective enforcement, this is what everybody's talking about. The truth is, I can give you some other very explicit examples of this, but I don't want to belabor the point, but maybe it should be. And that's why I bring it up, because I want to make sure that we start thinking about what kinds of actions we need to take to change the ordinance system, to make sure that they're being implemented correctly. Because I can tell you right now, and I don't have it with me, but I do have it in PDF, and I'll email it to everybody, and I didn't have a chance to play it on Zdrav, but I will tell you this, that that ordinance, the sign ordinance, called for seven hundred and fifty linear feet for an off-premise sign. And you know what the distance is from that front door to that sign? It's five hundred and seventy feet, like Google Earth did. But I shouldn't even have to do that. But I'm only here trying to formulate a cohesive argument to say, we have a problem. But it shouldn't be that. We have a problem, whether I ever do it or not, we have a problem in the business community, and even in the residential community, that our code enforcement, that our City Hall is putting the burden of proof and taxing our residents and our businesses, their hard-earned money, their harder time, to jump over a hoop that the city should be responsible for. I hope we can make those changes. I hope City Hall hears this, I hope Mr. Kelty hears this, I hope that code enforcement hears this, I hope that streets and everybody in City Hall hears this. We want... We want everyone to be providing something that one of our fellow councilmen, two years ago, said during the strategic plan. He said one word, not two words, excuse me, and that was Mr. Brimich. He said, "Customer service. We need to focus on customer service." Now, I don't go around quoting Mr. Brimich quite often, but tonight I will tell you. He was dead on, on the spot, and what we're doing right now is not customer service. I'm on the receiving end of it in many other ways. That's not customer service. All the residents and business owners that are hurting, I'm going to try to continue to be your voice. Y'all need this stuff. I'll come forward too. I know Mr. Randy's coming forward. He represents other businesses. I'm coming forward. I'm not saying anything that's a personal, since I am repeating and bringing the message, so I am the messenger. And that's why I have this on the agenda. And is this time-sensitive? Absolutely, because all of these businesses are trying to make a profit. They're trying to run their businesses. They're trying to open their businesses. That's time-sensitive. That's all I have here.
Counsel Marat, as you said in this item, do you have anything you'd like to say?
Just, you know, you know, the businesses will reach out to Jeff, then they'll flow down and reach out to me. So, and, you know, I respect this role and to work and code enforcement. I know they got a lot, a lot out there, and so I respect that. And I just ask that, I'm not, I'm not asking for war, battle, debates, just there could be a middle ground or an agreement, you know, between both sides. You know, and then Councilman Pena will also speak or discuss certain matters. And so there could be certain, like an agreement, middle ground, somewhere where they can meet with business owners and, you know, I think we can settle this issue or, and that could be later. That's it.
Counsel Gagnon, you have anything more?
Yeah, I want to add, customer service. In my line of duty, that is priority one, always has been. And, you know, in my opinion, it's not just code, but I expect it, the highest of customer service throughout the whole city. Unfortunately, the code department has a history of very low customer service. It's been well documented. People have discussed it over and over and over up here, and we all get phone calls and emails and everything. So I encourage the city to look at and see what we can do better. Because we need to be working with the citizens as opposed to against. That's all I have there.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Counsel, how many housing bills have we had last year and this year?
How many new houses?
Yes, sir. Do you see that number?
Approximately how many new houses have they gone to see annually?
Approximately six last year.
How many new businesses have we had coming in? I think making a point is important, but I think when you threaten people's jobs, then it's going in a different direction. And I get phone calls too, Jenny. And we're not asking. The state code, for example, for us, excuse me, kind of one we talked about tonight. And I said, "Are they wrong?" Well, they're very book smart. Well, I said, "Are they wrong with their policy?" And they changed it, so, and this happened, and it's four different times they've been doing it. I had personal phone calls complaining about codes, where they're wrong. We changed the codes to modernize, to update, to make them safe for y'all, for visitors. Nobody wants to change. Everybody wants to replace a corner, a line, dig it all the way in, then attach it to the city's thoroughfare as well. And guess what? It's against the rules. You can't have it both ways. You can't say these folks are terrible, and then they're doing a good job. Thirty new businesses in the City of Freeport. At least six houses. More than that, there's even more than that last year. And if we're able to get these other places online, they'll do it too. Starbucks, a hotel. How many complaints, Mrs. Roman, have you had from the hotel people? How many? Zero? Zero. That's not what you heard. We always seem to hear things, and I'm tired of venue windows. I'm ready for people's names. If you're going to come up and say that this person is wrong, then have the courtesy to come up and not just call you and say, "Oh, no, listen," bring it up. And then let's find out, because if she's wrong, you'll hold her responsible. But the problem is, because you just threatened their jobs, counseling?
But why are the residents not coming forward?
Because there must be this wholesale retaliation. Nobody tells me about retaliation. Now, I have had complaints about customer service, about lack of phone calls, or maybe an email after the fact. Maybe the permit took too long. But I don't hear this retaliation that you're talking about. And by, I'll tell everybody right now, if you're being retaliated against, you come see me. And I will take care of it. It is factual. It, how many times have we heard at different meetings, somebody came to an EDC meeting and said, "No, I can't tip my money because I can't get this done." And I said, "That's terrible. So what do I do?" I don't come out here and land back to everybody and bring the dirty laundry. I talk to Mr. Kelty, who is what we're supposed to do, and say, "Check it out." Well, guess what? Those folks haven't replied for a permit. And they weren't following the process. There are processes that must be followed. There are rules that must be followed. Don't put your sign in the right way. It's, that's on your sign itself, you know? So why push the envelope? Why not do it right in the first place? I don't know. Maybe it's because, little retaliation. Goodness gracious. We have to get past this lame game. I actually agree with Counsel Marat. There has to be some middle ground someplace. He even complimented Mr. Roman. He complimented Lance. He complimented Mr. Kelty. And if we don't compliment Kathy for the report they got and the award they got, shame on us. Shame, let me finish, sir. I gave you plenty of time, and then I hope we get to the next one. Well, actually, I know that Mr. Kelty's fine. I think he should have, if he wants to. You can't throw significant, serious accusation without a factual basis. And hearsay, and a comment this, or I saw this, unless you have personal knowledge for that person's willing to come up and write a complaint, be a suspect. So please, I encourage you to do so. Please come see me. Bring them to me, Counsel Pena. Let them tell me.
You know how that looks though, right?
It doesn't look like anything to me. You're coming to me to talk to me. And I don't want to get a bag of pork because that's not what people want. I'm just responding to the lotion that y'all put out there. I am just responding to the
This is what that looks like though, Mr. Mayor.
I am not, you're their job.
It's like you're the gamekeeper of what's right and what's good, and you're not. We are all, so collectively.
Well, I don't go over and try to give you those jobs, Counsel Pena.
I'm regurgitating exactly what the whole community is expressing.
Let me see, there you go. Whole community.
Well, let me put it to this way, for those that actually reach out to me.
Well, let me finish first, and then we'll let the discussion respond, if he needs to.
I just want to comment on your against the rules comment.
Jeff, you had thirty minutes to talk about this thing.
Well, we'll have a discussion, not two solitudes.
Anyway, ladies and gentlemen, I think what was said up here was out of line.
I know.
I think that I'm not rushing anything under the goddamn road. I just think there are ways to do it in lord knows, in this hate-filled society that we're in, this is not the way to do it.
I played stuff with the port. When I tell them what's wrong with the end of it.
I'll call the question on this on item number three, and since there is no other action that we've taken in the guard's app, we'll go to item number four. Discussion, possible action, guard, and proper procedure related to open session and executive session during city council meetings. Counsel Pena, Counsel Marat.
I'll take that, Mayor. First of all, I want to thank Mr. Olson for articulating the point in executive session. And I don't think this executive session privileged material to express what you had did, who expressed, which is basically, the motion that we made was within the rules. And so I'll leave it at that. We don't need to examine it any further. We know what the rules are. We can exercise that rule again in the next meeting. Will be, as a question. We can decide that at that time. But beyond that, I think I'm satisfied with the manner of the explanation that Mr. Olson. And so we want to call the question. Call for a motion to adjourn. I'm in that motion.
Please do. Well, Counsel Marat was your second. You might have some second. This is a special meeting. What would you like to say?
No, I agree with Jeff and the explanation Mr. Olson gave. Yeah, we can go ahead and adjourn the meeting.
All right. Why don't you make a motion?
I'll make a motion to adjourn there.
You have a second?
I'll second.
Do you have a second, Counsel Marat? Anybody opposed to adjourn? All those who voted aye?
Aye.
All opposed, we're adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
You almost hit Olson. Almost hit Olson. You all right, Olson? Let's give you the break on you. That's it for the city council meeting today. It's pretty productive. We managed to not be on, get out of the edge of controversy, managed to get out of that. I think we did good. We worked together. I think that's the best part tonight. It was a little rough-edged, but I think we did good overall, so. So I'll see y'all later.